March 7th at 7:00 PM. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Mayor Virchell.
Here.
District One, Moreset.
Here.
District Two, Yaku.
Here.
District Three, Bernard.
Here.
District Four, Wyland is excused. District Five, O'Malley.
Here.
District Six, Vanslow is excused.
At this point in our agenda, we take comments and questions from, suggestions from the citizens on items that are not on the agenda. Andrea, I think I'd like to call on you first from the chamber, please. I know you'd called and said, "Could I ...?" So, you're up.
First of all, thank you. Is this on?
Yes. If you could state your name and address and all that good stuff, please.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Andrea Jorgensen from the Hudson Area Chamber Commerce and Tourism Bureau, and I thank you for the opportunity to get up and speak tonight. I would just like to remind the Hudson community that the Chamber is currently planning the Ninth Annual Spring Showcase Event, and that is scheduled for April 3rd at the Hudson Civic Center and Hockey Arena. And I would encourage people to come on out and join our 80-plus business members that are putting together expo booths, and we will be sampling a variety of foods and hosting entertainment that's open for the families to enjoy. We have several family activities included and entertainment that will also include the Raptor Center from the University of Minnesota, also magicians and so forth. So, we ask the community of Hudson to come out on April 3rd from 11:00 to 4:30 to visit the Spring Showcase Event at the Hockey Arena. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. How many people would like to address the council tonight on something not on the agenda? We have three, four people? Okay. Mr. Conner? If you could say your name and address, please.
Sir, good evening. Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Gordon Conard, 36 Eagles Nest Circle in Ritz-Cedar Canyon, Hudson. The topic and proposal I have to give you tonight is regarding the new sign ordinance, which the council adopted recently. A lot of work went into fine tuning, revision in the sign ordinance for the city. A lot of work in the Plan Commission and in City Council. We have it. It's been approved. It's the law of the land, the land being the city of Hudson. I think now it's very important, early on, to take steps and allocate resources to educate the people in Hudson and to enforce that ordinance. The ordinance, the preamble, very clearly states some of the purposes from reading it some time ago. Important elements about the aesthetics of the appearance of the city, safety. You can take coral with parts of the ordinance. Overall, I'm happy with it, and I think it's an improvement. So, I would really propose that the council allocate resources, put it on the agenda. I encourage you to put it on the agenda for the next council meeting, first the Finance Committee, and that's my proposal to you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Mr. Pearson?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Dick Pearson. My address is 1109, excuse me, Crestview Drive, Hudson. The purpose of my coming down here tonight, if you'll indulge me for a few minutes, is just to, I got a question or two and some comments relating to the meeting up at the Hudson House Saturday. One of the questions I have is the Police Department, not, you know, I just kind of wondered about what happened up there in the mob scene, if you will. And it was a mob scene. Some of these people are downright vicious. I had some of my grandchildren with me, and other people I knew that were going to attend that meeting were intimidated, and that's the name of the game, is intimidation, keep people away. We drove in, they start snapping pictures and hollering at us. Now, I can handle that. Been around the block a few times, but what bothers me is my grandchildren. My daughter says, "Dad, you know, I'll never go back to one of those things." I said, "Becky, that's where they're getting you." I said, "That's what it's all about, is intimidation. You got to stand up and speak and stand up for what you believe in." So, therefore, I would question, if you will, the police protection. I noticed, my observation, is when we first drove in there, parked way in the back, walked down, my grandchildren, if you will, made their own signs. And immediately, when we got down there, the police officer came to us, focused on us. "Hey, you got to stand over there, what to do, how to do it, what to do with the signs," very emphatically. Now, of course, we complied, you know, that's his job, and I understand it. However, immediately, when he turned his back, that mob scene, if you will, they came right over in our territory, if you will, drum in hand and right in our face. And then, we were told about our signage. "We can't do this with the signs. We can't do that with the signs." Well, then, we proceeded into the Hudson House, if you will. To me, this was a learning experience for my grandchildren. And how they were mistreated, you know, I find it, again, I'll use the word vicious. I find it very ironic here, about a week or two ago in the Hudson paper, they had an article in there about bullying, children in school bullying. What I saw up there Saturday was a lot of bullies. My question again is, when we came out of the Hudson House, we had to go through the lobby. There were protesters in there with their signage. We were specifically told by the police officers, "Not the holder signs up, you know, be careful with them," whatever it was. But when we came out, we had to go through the lobby and be objected to all the verbal abuse, go through the parking lot, listen to the curse words. Shame on you, shame on my wife, shame on my grandkids. My grandson-in-law was accused of child abuse because he had his children there, my grandkids, with their signage. But again, when we came out, there was a mob scene in that parking lot. Now, we could not get through. My question, where were the police officers then? They were very emphatic as to what we could do and how we had to go and stand and whatnot with our signs. When we departed, that mob scene was out there. We could not get through that mob scene. They had total control of that parking lot. We had to, once we got in our vehicle and proceeded, we had to stop, wait for them, if you will, the mob scene again, to be kind enough to let us through. And while we're doing that, to listen to all this verbal abuse. And quite honestly, I think it leaves a bad taste in my mouth. We have always supported the school and the schoolteachers, but my opinion, if you will, of schoolteachers after that has changed. But again, I come back to my question. What were the priorities of Police Department? Why didn't they not take control of that parking lot when we were trying to get out of there? In essence, that's about it.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. Anyone else?
My name is Lori Rotewald, and I live at 480 Virgil Road in Hudson. And I am a teacher here in the Hudson School District. I teach fifth grade. And the reason I'm here is I would like to just open up discussion and get it on the agenda for the city and the mayor to put this on the agenda for the council meeting because we do know how the budget bill is affecting our community. It is not only affecting our teachers, it is affecting our students, it is affecting our community as a whole. And so, we are asking that it please be opened up, and let's get the council to take a stand on this budget bill that is greatly going to affect our community as a whole. We know that there are cuts going to happen. You can only cut so many reams of paper, and soon, it's going to be bodies that are going to be cut, and that's a concern for us as educators. We hope that the council would please open up for a discussion so that we can get some local support for this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Kurt Weiss. I live at 613 Cedar Drive North in North Hudson. And I also want to talk a little bit about the mob scene at the Hudson House on Saturday. Now, I've seen this three weekends in a row. I was in Madison, I guess, when it took place up here on Carmichael, three Saturdays ago. But I was at Kilcarney and, two Saturdays ago, right down at the entrance. And it was anything but peaceful there. And the same thing happened there. The county sheriff deputies had no control of that situation. In fact, it was so bad, I was the one that called 911 with the deputy standing next to me, telling me that he was understaffed and couldn't bring anybody. I called 911, and lo and behold, the deputies showed up to help out the situation. And what I saw up at the Hudson House was even more disturbing. And what's happening here that I see is that now what we've had at Kilcarney and what we've had at the Hudson House is that we've had people getting more emboldened to the point where at the Hudson House, 400 people stormed over the snowbank and surrounded a legislator's car, completely surrounded her car in a private parking lot. And I think each and one of you on the council ought to be disturbed by that, that that was allowed to happen in the city of Hudson. The question I would have is, what happened? It's either incompetence on the part of the Police Department, or it's compliance, or maybe it's a little bit of both. But I would guess that if Herb Cole came to the Hudson House and gave a speech to the Wisconsin St. Croix Democrats, and there were Tea Partiers out there on that sidewalk, I'd be willing to bet that the Police Department wouldn't allow those Tea Partiers. I don't think they'd go over the snowbank if they were told not to anyway, but I don't think that they'd allow that to happen, Herb Cole's car to be surrounded by 400 people in a private parking lot. So, my question is, what's the difference between Herb Cole and Sheila Harsdorff? I don't see any difference. They're both elected officials, and they deserve the protection of the Police Department. And I'm very disturbed about what I saw. And I think that the mayor and the city council ought to have a discussion with the police chief, who was there at the time, and ask him why he didn't have any plans. He had no plans for Ms. Harsdorff to exit. He had no plans for protection. He had no plans to keep those people from coming over that snowbank and charging that car. So, I think it's the city council's job to find out about that, and maybe they should, there should be some consequences. Now, I've seen actions by the Hudson Police Department where there were no consequences, and I was part of that in 2005. And there were absolutely no consequences for police abuse at that time. And maybe the city council would be different now and the mayor and change that a little bit. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? If not, we'll move on. Thank you all for coming. Madam Clerk, a consent agenda.
To approve the regular meeting minutes of February 21st, 2011. To approve claims for payment in the amount of $11,495,047.45. Additional information is available in the Clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. To approve the issuance of two regular operators licenses for the period March 7th, 2011, to June 30th, 2012. And to approve the issuance of three taxi cab drivers licenses for the period March 8th, 2011, to June 30th, 2011. Additional information is available upon request in the Clerk's office. To approve the February 23rd, 2011 draft of the Parks Gardener Job Description as submitted. To approve the issuance of a special event permit to Final Stretch Incorporated, Mark Fongers, for the Gopher de Badger Race on August 13th, 2011, with the requirement that all signage is picked up at the completion of the event. A letter of credit or cash deposit to cover, police, fire, EMS, or other city services is submitted to the city no later than 10 days prior to the event. The event may begin at 5:30 AM. And to accept the reduction in the required amounts of liability insurance coverage as indicated on their certificate of insurance and contingent on compliance with any changes in the barricade usage policy. To approve the 2011 Grand View Park concession agreement with the Hudson Softball Association Incorporated with a payment of 8% of the gross sales to the city.
Can we pull the button, please?
To approve the request of Urban Olive and Vine, 522nd Street, to amend the alcohol premises description on their alcoholic beverage license to include the serving area of the entire interior premises of the front dining area and back bar area, wine storage in an enclosed location in the back bar, back stock in the basement cellar, beer storage in the front dining area, refrigeration unit, and the files stored in the basement file cabinets. To approve the issuance of a secondhand jewelry and secondhand article dealers license to Jeff A. Parsons Doing Business as THR and Associates Incorporated for a Treasure Hunters Roadshow Event, March 22nd through 26th, 2011, at the Best Western Hudson House in, from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM. To approve extending the lease agreement with the Hudson Boosters for a three-year term through April 30th, 2014. At the rate of $50 per month for rental of the storage facility at 6 St. Croix Street. To approve extending the lease agreement with St. Croix Rowing Club for a three-year term through April 30th, 2014, at a rate of $50 per month for rental of storage shed for boats at 6 St. Croix Street. To accept and place on file the 2010 Dutch Elm Report. To place on file the quarterly reports of the Parks and Public Works Director and the Waste Water Director. And the February 18th, 2011 minutes of the Dear Management Committee, the February 22nd, 2011 minutes of the Police and Fire Commission, the March 1st, 2011 minutes of the Community Access Board, and the February 16th, 2011 minutes of the St. Croix EMS Commission. And that is all.
That's plenty. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, roll call.
Moreset?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Okay. Which leads us to our first order of business under Finance. Consider the Amendments to Municipal Code Concerning Additional Licensing Requirements for Operator's License and Taxi Cab Driver's License Ordinance Number 6-11. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Oh, roll call, though, I'm sorry.
Moreset?
No.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
Motion fails. You have to have four votes. Move for first reading.
It's the only other choice, so I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Nancy, do we need to, we don't need to read that out loud, do we, for everyone? First, on the taxi cab violations, the ordinance itself. I think everybody has seen that. We've got the ordinance, okay. Second item is the 2011 agreement with the Hudson Softball Association for concessions at Grand View Park. Our agreement calls for a reduction from 10% to 8%. And Finance approved it 2 to 1 vote. Lori, you pulled it.
Well, I did. I just wanted some discussion. You know, the agreement that we have with the bathhouse concession stand is for 10%. You know, I guess I'd like to know, is this just a one-year reduction? You know, we said that the amount, that the difference would only be about $290. Mr. Mayor, you said you don't know what they're going to do with that small amount of money. So, is this a longer-term approach to concessions up there, or is it truly just a one-year?
Well, as the contract states, Lori, it is a one-year contract. And that is what the park board approved, recommended to this.
May I ask, is there, does anybody know why revenues were down last year? Because it was a long, hot summer.
Yeah, because they lost teams.
Oh, okay.
Because the fees too high. So, they've asked, they've got maintenance to take care of, and their coolers they have to adjust to. And now that they're starting to build and the parks are, I guess, up to their standard, they're okay with, they're asking for us to help them get more people back by reducing the fee so they don't have to pass the cost on to fixing the coolers or whatnot. And Tom, if you want, you can jump in and explain anything that I don't explain very well.
The softball association came to the park board meeting, the other, last meeting, last month, and just requested that the fees be dropped from 10% to 8%. He did state that some of the coolers and things needed repairs. And to keep the fees down and to keep the association going, he requested the reduction in concessions. He did note that the last two years, the fields have improved, and he's hoping that more teams will join as it's been really declining the last few years. So, he's hoping to get the softball association back up and running. So, they just requested the reduction to help the softball association.
Is he going to reduce the fees in the concession or the fee to join to be sponsored?
Sponsorship, I think. He may leave that the same. I can't answer.
Well, I just don't know what he's reduced, what, if we reduce to 8%, what is he?
I think they were talking about the fees they charge the teams that come in. They're trying to lower those, I think, to get more teams in.
How much, I don't know how much those fees are, I guess.
They're at least $500 from last time I sponsored a team.
Can we talk a little bit just about the funding up there? And, you know, in the past, we've done some improvements, and some of it's come from their designated funds, some's come from the city. What's the condition of that fund, and how is it being built up?
The Grand View Park Fund did not have enough money in it to do everything they wanted to do last summer. So, there was a transfer between the Parks Donation Fund, which is just a general fund that they use for various, transferred over to the Grand View Park Fund, if you will. So, they had enough money to cover what they needed to cover.
Okay.
And then...
So, now that fund is empty?
Well, pretty, I mean, there may be a small balance in there. And then, the intent is, as those funds are built up, to replenish, you know, to give the money back to the Park Donations Fund.
Okay. And how are those funds built back up? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Through this concession.
Through the concessions, through the registration of teams?
Just through the concessions. This is the source of funding for that Grand View Park Fund.
Liquids and edibles, that's it.
But yeah, there's no other funding.
So, now we're talking about putting less money into that fund?
Correct. Yes. Depending on what their sales are.
Okay, I'm just trying to...
It's a decrease of the notes here of $291.
Yeah, it's not significant, but it's just, I don't know that we're addressing any long-term problem.
So, the first thing that will happen as funds continue into this Grand View Park Fund is they have to, will be transferred back over to repay that other fund. So, it'll be a couple of years at least.
So, they're going to be transferred back at a slower rate?
Correct. Could I suggest we maybe look at it another way, that if there continues to be a decline, because of fees or whatever reason, if there continues to be a decline, we're never going to get our money back. And I'd like to get our money back to the general fund.
Well, it didn't come from the general fund.
Parks, general Parks Fund.
It's a separate designated, but yes, yes.
That their fund you mentioned earlier.
Right.
We're not going to get our money back unless we get some people playing ball up there and other people attending to watch them. So, for that alone, I think it's in our interest to give up $291 in hope of getting the rest of the money back.
But what I'm not hearing is the other side of the equation. What are they doing to get teams back, and what assurance do we have that that's actually going to change? What's being done differently this year from last year? I mean, I just, I'm looking for more information. I want to understand it.
Well, for one, I don't think they're raising their fees like they have incrementally over the last five, seven, six years. The other thing is, if they leave it the same, and as we continue to improve the fields, they're going to attract more teams, they're going to market better, and it's going to speak for itself, as it already is. I don't know if you can...
I know what you're asking. I know what Lori's saying. She's saying, she's asking, well, I don't need to say, speak for you, but if I'm understanding what you're saying, it's that what changes are they going to make to attract the teams? I mean, if the fees are lower in other cities or, you know, as it is...
Would it make sense to have the softball, have the softball president, the softball association, come to our meeting? Would that help?
I would like a little more information. We've put a lot of money into those fields, and I just think we need to all be on the same page. So, I would like that.
Would you?
Can we table to the next meeting?
Postpone it until the next meeting?
Yeah, I'll move that we postpone until the next meeting, when we can hear from spokesperson.
A second then.
Tom, can you make, or, well, I'll get a vote on this first, and then we'll... All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Could you make sure you get a hold of him and see if he can come to our next meeting?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Bless you.
Item number 10, Request Approval for Mutual Service Agreement Between the Police Officers to Madison, Wisconsin. This was voted down in Finance 2 to 1?
Never got voted.
Never got voted. We didn't get a second. One of those two. So, it's coming to the city council with no recommendation.
I'll move the table indefinitely.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'll share some of the discussion that happened in Finance, just for the general public's information. I think what we talked about is, and we heard about some of that in the comments tonight, is our Police Department's been stretched pretty thin over the last several weekends with large groups protesting, not all from within our city, some from out of state. We've been more than overextended. We've had quite a few officers on overtime. I don't think we're frankly in a position to be sending officers down to Madison. And I would gather that there are municipalities closer to Madison and better staffed perhaps than we are, you know, to provide that additional support. So, there was just not support on Finance for it.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Public Works Committee, we have a Consider a Fee for Delivery of Barricades for Special Events and Private Requests. It's back again.
Well, only because you asked for it.
Some of us asked for it.
The council asked for this to be remanded to Public Works once again and for a recommendation to come from Public Works. And I've come to you tonight with half of it, the job concluded. When we discussed this at our Public Works meeting, we did come to a conclusion as to what we wanted to recommend on one-block parties or one-block events. Some of these, as you had in Public Safety this morning, there's a one-block event that occurs every year. There's not a block party, but it's a one-block event needing only four barricades. For a number greater than four, for large events, we've asked Tom Zulie to come back to us at our next Public Works meeting to delineate for us the actual costs involved with barricades and cones, et cetera, because we want to follow the city's policy of, you know, not trying to make a profit on any of these occurrences, but just not to incur a loss that we then pass on to all taxpayers throughout the city. So, what we come to you tonight, and I'll make a motion on this, that we go with the committee's recommendation of an addition to the permit form, a permit form which already exists for block parties or those sorts of events, that it calls for only four barricades, that's two at each end of one block, that there be no charge, there be a $25 deposit. And if you pick up the barricades and return them yourselves, you get your $25 back, so there's no charge whatsoever. If you want us to deliver them and retrieve them, time and gasoline, that's your $25. That's the motion.
And I'll second that. And just to clarify, it is for block parties only?
It is for one-block events. I want it to be content neutral, that it's not necessarily a party, but it is something that calls for four or fewer barricades.
I thought the discussion that we had in Public Works specified that it was for block parties as opposed to other public events.
Well, we do have, I can only think of the one you discussed in Public Safety this morning.
Right, which, when we discussed it in Public Safety, the Locust Street Block Party, the Locust Street Car Show that happens continually through the summer.
Right.
And we, I questioned what to do at that moment because of what was pending at council, and Tom's response to me was, "Well, we just drop them off, and they keep them all summer, so we don't need to charge anything."
Yeah, they take care of the... Yeah, they, they take care of their own barricades. And that's what we're discussing now, is that if somebody takes care of the barricades, the transport of the barricades, and the use of the barricades themselves, they get their $25 deposit back. If they want us to do it, it's $25.
I still think that we talked about this only applying to block parties as opposed to special events.
We were using the phrase block parties. That's right.
Right, because we talked about other events where, where nonprofits profit or where businesses profit. This was an individual case where we're just talking about private block parties. We don't want to discourage those gatherings. We want to make it possible for them to happen at no additional cost.
And I don't disagree with you, but my worry is here, just like with the sign ordinance, we are now getting into the content of what's going to go on in that block. And I don't know that we want to, Catherine, you may want to weigh in here. We don't, I don't think we want to get into that.
But this is a policy for our block parties. I mean, that's the only thing we're doing is we're changing the block party form. This has nothing to do with other events. Yeah, this has nothing to do with other special events in the city.
Can I go back and reread what the motion was, please?
I'll try.
Okay.
To approve the Public Works Committee recommendation of adding an item to the block party application to allow four or fewer barricades at, with a $25 deposit that would be refunded unless pickup and return of the barricades is required.
Has there been a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Those are the first four free.
If, yes, if they pick them up and bring them back themselves. If they need our Public Works Department to do it, we have to pay for that. So we pass that on to them. And that's their $25 deposit.
And if I may, part of what lunch in this discussion, I, I looked at what some other cities have done for this. We are way at one end of the spectrum. A lot of cities will charge you for the permit. They'll charge you for the barricades. Some cases, they'll charge you for the permit. They'll tell you to get your barricade somewhere else. We're way at the other end. We don't charge anything for the permit and we deliver.
That's what we, that's what makes us so unique.
Well, no, at some point, Randy, it's, you know, we need to be realistic about the costs that are involved.
But almost every meeting, we're, we're making fees for everything we do.
What we're doing is we're saying, these are special requests and there's a cost associated with it. And we're not going to pass it on to every taxpayer.
Are we required to use the city barricades for a block, with a block party request? What if, what if, what if, are residents allowed to get approval for a block party and barricade the streets with maybe purchased cones or something with police officers' approval? Or with their own cars? I mean, is our only option is the city-owned barricades? Catherine's looking at me like I'm nuts.
Well, I mean, what you're getting into is the safety of city streets. And I suppose you would, but that would add another cost of the police to review, what are you going to use for?
Well, that, well, block parties go to the public safety meeting anyways, right? So we're already reviewing it at the public safety meetings.
This is, in some cases, no additional fee. That's all I'm saying.
I'm just question, I'm just asking if residents have an option of using?
I just think it's much simpler if you have barricades that the city uses. They probably have reflective-type material on them. It's city streets. You're going to be responsible for what happens in those streets. And I just would think you're better off using an approved.
And if you pick it up, and if you pick it up, there's no cost.
Right. I think, Mary, we have to have something that's recognized as a city traffic control.
I know. I agree.
Finance have to all look the same. Barricades need to look the same.
Sure. I was just curious. I, I, I'm just struggling with the pick it up part because I don't know if any of you have tried picking up one of those barricades before, but I have.
The legs fall off when you do.
They're very heavy. They're not light. And they're 10 feet long. And you pretty much are, better have a truck or know someone with a truck. And it's not the most convenient thing, which I understand is your point.
Mr. Zulie, would you like to add something?
The wooden barricades are very heavy and they're, they're 12 foot, 12 feet long. We have purchased the last few years a composite-style barricade that's, it's a plastic legs on them. They're very light. And the other part, the vertical part, is made out of composite with the reflective marking that you're talking about, Mr. O'Malley. And they're eight feet long. And actually, they're pretty light. So, I mean, you know, we can designate those if, if people are having difficulties, you know, loading them up or whatever. So those are a lot lighter.
That's a good idea.
And two across, eight feet is wide enough, I assume, yes, as I'm doing my math in my head.
The narrowest street we have in the city is 25 feet wide. Most streets are, Danny, 30, 33 feet?
33 or 36.
Yeah, 33, 36 feet.
Just a question on your application. Are you saying then that this $25 for four barricades applies only to private block parties? So if it's the same number of barricades for a commercial type?
This is just the block party request form. So yes. I mean, the change that we made is for block parties. We're still waiting for more information from Tom on what the other costs are. So we're not amending any other.
But even if a relatively commercial, a commercial event uses four, you're just not addressing that at this point?
No.
Well, that's why I worry about the con, we're getting into the content of, of the nature of the event.
Well, it's not the content so much as whether it's a rational distinction. And there's some basis for it. But if you're telling me you're not addressing that at this point, you may address it in whatever Tom is coming back with.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Again, the motion is to approve a $25 non-refundable fee if delivered. And if you pick up, there'll be no charge. And this is for a block party.
You get your re, you get a refund?
Refund back. Yes, that's correct. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Thank you. Unfinished business. Designation, designation of a separate account in the parking fund for development of additional parking sites. Devin?
In last month, in this last meeting you had during the course of the discussion, the park setting aside 30%, never made it into the second motion because there was an original motion and then it got changed. It was inferred, but it wasn't specific. And we listened to it several times. So if that's the desire of the council, we just want to make sure it's in there so that there's a record that the 30% should be designated. So that's why I brought it back, to make sure that your wishes were.
So, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can I just make a comment while we're on this subject? There will need to be changes to the ordinance on forfeitures. There's more than just one spot that talks about parking fines. So I think the committee's going to have to look at that again. And then on the rates, there'll need to be a resolution to implement that. So if the committee meets between now and the next council meeting and makes a decision, can, really don't want to implement anything till that's done.
Okay. Thank you. A new business. Proposed amendment to Chapter 254-3C concerning the time allotted for submission of final plats, ordinance number 4-11.
Again, this is a, so the ordinance brings in compliance with the statutes as far as, our city must provide a subdivision submit their final plat. That's your prerogative, where you want to have first reading or second reading.
Roll call.
Morset?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Bernard? Yaku?
Yes.
Any discussion?
I'd like to note that we had a public hearing on this earlier this evening and there were no objections to this change.
Move to adopt ordinance number 4-11.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, proposed amendment to Chapter 255-14 to allow all other uses in office districts, ordinance 5-11.
This is a modification as far as uses that may be permitted in a office district. Last summer, we modified the uses to limit it to retail cafes, restaurants, and also limiting the space in office areas to allow a little more flexibility as far as uses. There was a use that came before, Plan Commission. Took quite a while to get discussions. I think there's a respectful disagreement between myself and the majority of the Plan Commission on this. I was very, not very concerned, but concerned that Catherine and I have spent quite a bit of time on the recommended changes to the office district and to turn around and change it shortly after again. Catherine called me this afternoon, was expressed concern about the open-ended consideration of other uses. And I think what Catherine and I would request of the common council tonight is have first reading, give Catherine and I an opportunity to go back and see if we can't make some minor adjustments to this ordinance to tighten it up just a little bit and bring it back for a second reading in two weeks. Maybe Catherine wants to express some of her concerns.
Well, yeah, I looked at this and it's just, it's pretty broad and pretty vague. Other uses that are compatible with the existing neighborhood. And it, it opens a door to having uses that, I mean, it doesn't even say other similar uses or, so we don't really know what type of uses may come up and may be proposed to fit into this language. So I don't know if there needs to be some discussion about what the Plan Commission envisioned or what, I just worry that some of these office districts are surrounded by neighborhoods and so forth. And it just opens a door that may put the council in either a difficult position of saying, of making a decision. And it's zoning and it's land use and it's, it's, there's, people rely on, well, they don't rely, but there's, you know, it affects people, both applicants and surrounding property owners. So if you have a better idea of what types of uses you may be thinking of or the mission was thinking of, I think it'd help tighten that up.
I think I can share a perspective. Hopefully, I reflect. I, you know, they're really looking at commercial uses, not, Catherine said, well, what about manufacturing uses? Well, that's really not the intent. It's, there might be some other types of commercial uses. Somebody brought up, it actually was going to apply for a barber shop to be within an office. Now, that may, very, a small barber shop in a building like the old county government building may fit very nicely inside a, inside that neighborhood. So those, I, I really think the intent was commercial uses, not, not industrial or manufacturing uses.
But that's the kind of tightening up Danny and I are talking about, to get, even putting in commercial in there, I think. Although we don't have a commercial district, we don't use that term in the zoning ordinance as such business. But.
But each of those.
That was my concern.
I'll move for a first read. Give you the time you need.
Yeah.
Other discussion? I think the issue comes in, they still would need to use, get a conditional use permit.
Absolutely.
We're not talking about.
I think, I think what Catherine's saying is, is that it's pretty broad. Just, you know, if Catherine and I could just have an opportunity to discuss it and see if we might be able to tighten it up. If we can't, then, you know, we'd discuss it again at the next meeting.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item C, disallowance of a claim for Daniel and Rochelle Holland, Resolution Number 3-11.
Move this one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Morset?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
I think you have the resolution in front of you.
Move to adopt Resolution 3-11.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this point, Communications and, is there anything? Nope. Communications, a recommendation from the mayor. Couple things. St. Croix County Historical Society sent me a, sent the city a letter thanking for the subsidy of the St. Croix County Historical Society. It helps keep our museum as a tourist asset to the city. And they sent us a thank you for the money they receive from the room tax dollars. We also received a thank you note from the Hudson Chamber, Hudson Area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau for our continued investment in the Chamber of Commerce. And I had one other, or one other thing is Danny and I attended the St. Croix EDC banquet honors for top businesses in 2010. And I'm proud to say that two out of the three winners were from Hudson this year. The first business, as emerging business of the year was Garmar Composites of Hudson. I think they moved here from Baldwin, if I remember right. It's a high-tech manufacturing company in our industrial park. And they emerged as the emerging business of the year. And then the business of the year, large business of the year, was Valley Cardage, Jerry and Todd Gilbert, who are third-generation business owners in this community. So congratulations to both of them from the city. It was really nice to see for the whole St. Croix Valley economic development. And that's all I had.
Mayor?
Yes. Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I had one other thing. And Mr. Donald's going to speak for me.
Well, Mayor Burchill approached me before the council meeting and asked if there'd been any recent updates on the flood predictions. There was a update here yesterday or today. There'll be a new update on March 10th. So they have, I think, due to the fact that they're forecasting colder weather through much of the month of March, they're concerned about snow melting at a slower rate than what may normally occur in March. And then if you're getting in April with more precipitation, rain precipitation, the combination of that and warmer weather all at one point. They're predicting now, and of course, it's like baseball statistics, an 82% chance that the flood elevations could be as high as 690 feet above mean sea level. That's four feet higher than last year's floodwaters. And would put us in a fifth highest flood elevation of our history. That's one foot below the general level of the Dyke Road. So I'll just give you a perspective. Again, that's only purely a percentage consideration. And of course, on the 10th, we may have something worse. But as I mentioned a few weeks ago, city staff has reviewed, we're ready. We're ordering sandbags, additional sandbags, have them on hand. I believe there's going to be some policy consideration coming to the council at the next meeting. Staff is as ready as we possibly can get, I think. It's just a matter of now seeing what happens.
Thank you. Any alderperson have anything for future agendas or communications? City attorney?
Nope.
City administrator?
Couple of quick things I will forward to all of you, the balances on the park accounts so that you understand where we're at in all those. It was mentioned in Finance at the next council meeting. The intent is to approve the capital, where we discussed and hopefully approve the capital projects budget. I've been working with Sean Lenz as far as dates for issuance of bonds. We have kind of an odd schedule in March and April because of the election. So if we have to move anything around to meet the dates that Sean needs or to accommodate a schedule, I'll have Jim get an email out to you about changing meeting date or special meeting or something. So just kind of keep your eye out for that.
Devin, do you have stuff already for those?
For the?
Recommendations?
Public Works is finished now and.
And public safety is finished?
Will you get copies early before?
Yeah, we will. We just get the numbers inputted and the mayor and I want to run through it one more time. And then we'll, it'll show the mayor's recommendations, Public Works recommendations, where we're at, what we need to carry over from last year. It's pretty well ready to go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.